Mr. Fergali's attorney. This matter was opened with the hearing on June 7th. And thereafter was continued at the request of the applicant over several meeting dates. As I indicated, typically when an applicant requests permission to withdraw without prejudice, we grant them that application, that request, but Brian and Stu, your thoughts in this matter?
I'm not sure the difference between without prejudice or with prejudice.
Well, if we were to, I'm not sure we can dismiss it with prejudice without writing a hearing decision basing a denial of the application. The applicant is seeking not to go forward with the application and the without prejudice simply means that they're reserving the right at some future time to, to seek a variance. It may be on the same or it could well be on different grounds. But it doesn't forestall them from, it doesn't forestall them from filing again, if, if it's with prejudice. I would not do that without giving Attorney Connors an opportunity to be present and to argue why we should not do it with, with prejudice.
Okay, good, that's good. Thank you, John. All right, I'm all set.
Stu?
The only clarification that I would like is that the request for the demolition of the historic building is null and void now, too?
That is a matter that is not before this board. It is before the Historical Commission. We have no, no jurisdiction over that. And you know, what, what happens with that application or petition that was filed with the Historical Commission is not up to us. And so I'm not sure.
I thought there was a mention in the, in the letter that you just read with regard to that.
Well, it does reference that his initial preference was to retain the original historic house. And it's sort of leaving it unclear as to what plans the applicant has, has with that. But again, as far as the historic nature of the house, that is an issue that is not before, before our board, unfortunately. Peter, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I would say that, you know, that process has no variance due on the variance request here. So two different avenues, two different items. And there is no crossover between the two, I would say. So this request is only concerning the ZBA application. Considering the demo delay, that's with the Historical Commission and that's on a different path, I would say. But there's no crossover on these two matters.
Very good. Thank you for that. Somebody wish to make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw their application without prejudice?
To make a motion, we allow the applicant to withdraw their petition without prejudice.
And is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor of the motion?
And Brian Forrestall vote in favor?
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor?
Very good. That then concludes this, this matter. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Duca.
Yeah, Mike Turk, 47.
Yes, Mr. Duca.
How are you doing, gentlemen?
Good.
So this all thing is, all this stuff he's gonna do is all null and void?
Correct. He's not, he's not, he's withdrawing the application for a variance. So that would leave him back to the position he was in before the application was filed. And he would have to comply with the existing zoning bylaws.
So if he brings this back again, will we all be notified if he wants to redo this?
There would have to be a new, a new application filed and the notices would go out. New notices would go out just as notices went out when this application was filed. There's nothing pending before the ZBA as of now because we allowed the motion to withdraw without prejudice. And anything further that comes before the ZBA notice would go out to all the butters.
Okay. I just one more question, guys, before we close this. If he does come back, I mean, he did his own perk test out back. You guys aware of that?
That's not an issue that is before us at this point, and it's really not something that we can consider or discuss. I mean, we're a body that is sort of quasi judicial. So we only deal with matters that are brought before us. And something like that is not a matter that, that is before us, unfortunately, or fortunately, as the case may be.
All right. So my question is that would with the, what town organization or town would he have to go through to do something like that or be asked to do that?
That I don't know. That would be something that perhaps the Planning Department and the Town Planner might be able to advise you on, but this meeting is probably not the best place for that to, to that, for that to be done. But if you give Peter a call, he can.
I'll, I'll get, I'll give Peter a call. Just, just curious.
No, I understand that. And, you know, you're certainly entitled to, to an answer. And I have now thrown Peter under the bus for that answer.
Well, somebody's gotta govern it. I mean, there's a lot.
I, I would have gotten sure Peter can, Peter can explain the process that any home property owner has to, has to go through for something like that.
All right, gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Okay, very good, Mr. Duca. Thank you. Okay. If we may, if we could go to item number three on the agenda, which was the continued public hearing at 78 Union Street. Appeal of the Building Commissioner's Order. We had a hearing, which the last, the most recent date of the hearing was our last meeting. We had a discussion and we asked Peter to draft a decision pursuant to our discussion. Because of the onslaught of matters that are now on Peter's desk between the Planning Board and here, the decision isn't ready. And I would propose continuing this matter until our next hearing on September 28th. By which time Peter has indicated to me that he will have the draft decision ready. And we can have further discussion about it and close the hearing and, and vote. Is that okay with folks? Yes, Stu?
Mr. Chairman, I have a scheduling conflict. I have a, an event that I'm obligated to go to on the 28th, so I cannot attend that meeting. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Okay.
Any other thing will be fine.
I appreciate that. Nathan was not present at the last meeting nor, but I think he was present on the first day of the hearing. And if he reviews the, the minutes or the tape of the last hearing, he's able to step in. Is that right, Peter?
Yes, that would be correct.
Why don't we, why don't we try for next, for the next meeting? If it turns out that we, we can't do it, then we will have to deal with it at that, at that time, if that's okay. But thank you for letting us know, Stu. Does anyone wish to make a motion then to continue this hearing to Thursday, September 28th at 7:00 PM?
Make a motion, we continue the 4656 Fountain Street hearing to.
This is 78 Union Street, Brian.
Sorry, sorry. 78 Union Street to September 28th.
Is there a second? I'll second it. I, John Trefethan, vote in favor?
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor?
I, Stuart Siegel, with vote in favor, too.
Okay, very good. That makes it continued until September 28th. Thank you very much. Now, why don't we go to item number two? The initial public hearing for a special permit request at 28 Roberts Road. Mr. Hemming, thank you for your patience. It took a little longer than I had anticipated to, to reach you. Let me read the notice as we open the public hearing. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021, to hear the petition of John Hemming and Caitlin Abelli requesting a special permit per Chapter 48. Parenthesis, special permits, close parenthesis, of the Ashland bylaws to allow for the construction of an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming structure which encroaches on the side yard and front yard setbacks. The property in question is located at 28 Roberts Road, Assessors Map 10 Lot 97, in the Residential A zoning district. And parties wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. And submitted with the application was an application to the Zoning Board of Appeals received by the town clerk on August 17th, 2021. A letter dated July 30th, 2021, addressed to Mr. Hemming from Douglas Scott, our Building Commissioner, denying their request to expand the house because of side and front yard non-conformities and saying that they had to come before this board. We also have a listing of the butters to 28 Roberts Road. We have a copy of the residential property record card maintained by the Town of Ashland. And we also have a plan showing lot corners set prepared for John Hemming by Jarvis Land Survey, Inc., dated, it looks like July 16th, 2021. And that being said, Mr. Hemming, the way we usually work is at this point, we will turn the hearing over to you to tell us what you want to do and why you think we should approve it. The board will then have an opportunity to ask questions. And thereafter, if there are any members of the public who wish to ask questions to be heard, we give them an opportunity to say, say so, and then we will proceed from there. So that being said, I will turn the, the matter over to you.
Hey, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. My name is John Hemming. Along with my wife Caitlin Abelli, we're property owners at 28 Roberts, as Chairman just read. We purchased this home a little over 10 years ago. It's our primary and our only residence. We live here with two young children and we're expecting a third in December as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. As the Chairman indicated, we're looking to make an addition to our home and it's really just to expand our living space for our growing family. And we enjoy living in Ashland, specifically the school systems, our neighborhood and our property. You know, we look, we want to stay in Ashland for several more years and we look forward to being active members of the community. We're applying for a special permit, as was just read, because the addition of our house is on a pre-existing non-conforming structure and we do not meet two of the side setbacks. And so we're asking for your approval on the basis that the proposed structure is roughly the same as, as the existing with respect to those setbacks. And also that there's no change to the primary use. And in my opinion, the expansion of this home will have no adverse effects on the neighborhood. I trust in front of you that you have a copy of the plan submitted with the permanent application, but if not, I can share my screen and so that we could look at that.
Why don't, why don't we do that? Peter, can you allow Mr. Hemming to share the screen?
John, I already made you a co-host and you are able to share your screen.
Okay. It still says that it is disabled.
Okay. Okay, you should be all set.
Okay, gentlemen, can you see a site plan?
Yes.
Prepared for myself for 28 Roberts Road. And again, this is the same site plan that you should have been submitted with the application. And that was done by Jarvis Land Survey on the 16th of July of this year. If we focus on the left property line, if you're facing the house from the road, our existing structure is, which is our garage currently, is six feet from the shared property line with 24 Roberts Road, which does not meet the 10-foot setback requirement. Our proposed structure is slightly further away from the property line at 7.2 feet, as indicated by the, by the site plan. And now if I take your attention towards the front property line with the road, our proposed structure is 24.7 feet from the front property line, which is within the minimum of 40 feet. That is slightly two feet closer to the road than our existing house is today. The setbacks with respect to the right property line and the back property line are well within the setback requirements of 10 feet and 30 feet. And I think that basically sums up what, what our request is and, and the, the infringement on the setbacks as is currently proposed. So I'll turn it back to your chairman.
Anything else you want to, to say at this point?
No, sir.
Okay, if not, I will ask the board members if they have any questions. Let's start with Brian. Any questions for Mr. Hemming?
My one question, and I, I should know, but what is the front setback in this neighborhood?
Forty feet.
Forty feet, yeah.
The existing house is around 26.7.
And we're we're looking at making it 24.7?
That's correct.
Would you bump out slightly? And is that bump out just so that it attaches to the house in an elegant way? Is that the idea there?
That's right. Yeah, it's really for aesthetic. So it's, it's not one big block, if you will.
Gotcha. Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's all I got.
And Stu, any questions?
Did your architect give you any other options in terms of the configuration of your, your home?
We did talk, if really more for, in preparation for this meeting, if the moving forward two feet was not an option, whether we could go back, take that two feet or more on, on the back end, which is, which is certainly an option.
But that still would be, wouldn't conform to any setback requirement?
Correct.
So you've chosen this one because?
We, we chose this one because aesthetically, that's, that's how we wanted it to look. Knowing that we would have to apply for special permit to do any kind of addition whatsoever.
I see. Thank you.
Mr. Hemming, have you talked to any of your neighbors about your proposal and any feedback from them?
I talked specifically with the closest abutting neighbors, so to the left, right, and across the street. Everyone was supportive of that. A couple of other neighbors have approached after the notices went out and everyone is generally in favor of it. I haven't heard otherwise.
In looking at Google Maps of the neighborhood, it appears that all of the lots appear to be non-conform, pre-existing non-conforming lots. And many of them would appear to not meet the 40-foot front yard setback. Would that be, would my observation be correct to your knowledge, Mr. Hemming?
Yes.
Okay. Now, your, your, the plan calls to do away with the garage, so cars would be parked in the driveway?
Yes, one of the matters that I didn't know if it had to be brought up here, but I am actively talking with family members after reviewing the construction plans themselves. And we were looking to make changes to the inside construction before we submit for final building permits. But to stay within this site plan that we're requesting here today. So we may actually go back to having a garage, but there is ample space for two cars on, on the driveway as proposed.
Right. So if I understand you correctly, that if you decide to, to have a garage, it would still be with the, with the addition being 24.7 feet from the front and 7.2 feet on the side back. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. Will there be a cellar?
There'll be a slab for that and a crawl space. Yeah, just a slab and a crawl space underneath the.
Okay. Okay, that is all that, that is all the questions that, that I have at the moment.
One question that now arises would be, when will you finalize your plan so that, you know, if we make a decision, we have to know which of the plans you're deciding, you're, you're putting before us?
That's fair. That we would, if, if approved for the special permit today, we would go with this site plan, the construction plan itself, or it would be hoping to have within the 20-day window that I believe has to be, we have to wait anyway to submit for the building permits following this meeting.
I mean, it is, it is a little bit unusual, Stu, as you've indicated, I think, not to sort of have the final sort of plan with what's going to be built. But the relief that's being sought from, from us is to, I guess, approve the, the new non-conformities. And as long as what is ultimately built is built within those approved non-conformities, I think that's still okay. I don't know as we have to have the final plan, although typically we do have it, but I don't think we absolutely have to have it. Again, as long as the, the side is, if we approve it, the side is 7.2 feet and the front is 24.7 feet.
I just wanted a legal clarification, but thank you.
That's, that's my thought on it, but it looks like Peter may wish to chime in on this, so.
That's just to, to explain, yes, John is correct, obviously, that the special perm, I mean, special permit is concerning the non-conformity and the footprint of the structure and not really getting into the, you know, the, the, what the, you know, what that, what the outside or the exterior of that building would be, right? So in this case, the special permit as advertised is for the addition, the, the footprint per se relative to the setbacks. I do have some renderings. And, and John, I don't know if you want to share those renderings with the board. Obviously, those renderings were shared with the board. And I don't know if the board wants to look at those at this point.
This was something that was filed by Mr. Hemming because I, I haven't seen it.
It was, I believe it was up, I put it up on the website, but I'm happy to share my screen.
Why don't you just, so we can take a look at it, if that's all right, Brian and Stu?
Yes, sir. I would like to see that, too.
Can everyone see this?
Yep.
Yes.
So down here in the bottom left-hand corner is the front elevation of the house. Above is the proposed elevation. Obviously, this would not be with a garage door in front. And then off to the right side, you would see the existing front elevation on top and the proposed elevation on the bottom.
And Chairman, can I comment?
Is that for the right side of the house? Peter?
The bottom right corner? Yes, that would be for the right side of the house.
Okay. And do we have a left side of the house?
There's a left. And the left is in the bottom, bottom right.
Gotcha.
Mr. Hemming, you wanted to say something?
Yes. And, and so you certainly touched on what wasn't our intention was to submit plans and then resubmit plans. Obviously, we had, foolishly, I hadn't taken the time to run this by some relatives that were in the business and were very familiar with this. And now that we've done that, they've pointed out some errors in our thinking and our design that we wanted to, to modify. And part of that is, you know, some of the layout within. But as you said, what we're asking for is to stick with that site plan that we've submitted. And this will give you a sense of what we're doing. It's, it's adding a couple of bedrooms and we've decided to keep the garage.
Okay.
Yeah. And, but we wouldn't change, that's the height we're requesting.
Okay. Brian or Stu, any questions?
Oh, that, that looks fine to me. And I understand the dilemma between living space and garage space that they're dealing with. And as long as they stay within the new proposed setback that they have, I'm willing to go forward with either of their options. Doesn't matter to me.
And Stu, questions at all?
No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Well, at this point, why don't we open it to public comment? Maybe we can go back to our original screen. There we go. Does anybody wish to speak to this matter? I see one hand being raised. Peter, can you let Mr. DeSoni into the meeting to be heard?
Hello, Mr. Mark DeSoni. I am going to unmute you. And please step forward and ask her a question.
Thank you, Mark DeSoni, 49 Hawthorne Road. And I'm curious and trying to understand a couple of points here. The footprint. Is, what did the exec verbally said by the, by the building inspector say about the footprint?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mark.
The 40-foot?
Right. In the, in the Residential A area, the front yard setback is 40 feet, the side yard setback is 10 feet, and the rear yard setback is 30 feet. This house was. This house was built back, I believe, said it was nineteen fifty-eight, I believe. So it was a pre-existing, it became a pre-existing nonconformity when the zoning ordinance went into effect. So that at the present time, the front yard setback on the house is a nonconformity of twenty four, twenty-six feet, seven inches, and the side nonconformity is six feet rather than the ten feet required by the zoning ordinance.
Okay. That kind of brings up another question. Is this, his house that he was putting addition on, is it a single-family house now?
It is.
Is the neighborhood Roberts Road where he was asking the others side and across, are they both single-family houses?
From my, from my observation on Google Maps, they all, the neighborhood appears to be all single-family homes.
So Roberts Road is a row of single-family houses from end to end. Yes or no?
It appears to be it's off of Waverly Road near the the temple.
Okay. The reason why I'm saying it that way, because before, before we have the houses at the end of My Street Hawthorne Road, we were a single house, single-family road and 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 it was all formed, formulated like cookie kind together in the same plot plans. So that's why I'm asking about what the building inspector was asking about the forty-foot forty-foot question. So I'm, my question would be, by putting that on, what was, what was shown by Peter, the front side, right, left, and all that? Wouldn't that stretch it out a bit and become out of character of the neighborhood itself? That's my question. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other public comment from anyone else? If not, let's close the public comment and Brian and Stu, let's enter into not deliberation, but discussion at this point. Actually, I do have, I do have a couple of questions, a couple additional questions for for Mr. Hemming. As far as utilities, is there town water and sewer?
We do have a septic system.
Okay.
Yeah.
But town water?
Yes.
Okay. As far as potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services or tax base and employment, it would appear that you have a increased real estate tax bill in your future if the application is allowed. There wouldn't seem to be any other any other problems. Okay, that's so, that's the only questions I have. Brian and and Stu, your thoughts on on the application, whether to to grant it or not?
I I think, you know, they're giving back one point two feet on the side setback, which is the, in my opinion, more critical, because it's only a ten-foot side back, and they're asking for approximately two feet in the front, and they still have twenty feet back to, you know.
Yeah, they're changing the nonconformities by about ten inches total.
You're a take, yeah, and I don't think it's going to matter at all in that neighborhood, because all the other houses have a similar setback. They are going up in height a little bit, but everyone was notified in the neighborhood, and nobody seems to mind, and if they don't mind, I don't mind.
And looking at at Google Maps, the the property appears to be surrounded by by trees.
Yes, the primary behind us is the is the property owned by the temple, so that's all forest.
Yeah, and even to the side, there appears to be good foliage, whatever you want to call it, to to block the immediate neighbor. Stu, thoughts?
I I concur with Brian's assessment, and I don't have any major objection.
Okay, I I think it's 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 fine. There are certain, Mr. Hemming, there are certain things that we have to find as a board in order to to grant the special permit. And in considering whether or not to grant a special permit for a nonconforming, single-family residential structure, if there's going to be a a change in the nonconformity, then we have to determine that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. I would suggest this application clearly meets that that requirement. And then, in order to grant the special permit, we have to make other findings, primarily six other findings, community needs served by the proposal. I would suggest allowing a an Ashland family to continue to remain in their house by making an addition that allows for a new family member who will be here in December, I think Mr. Hemming said. It'd certainly be warranted. Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, would appear to be no change. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, this town water. And obviously, the septic system will have to be cleared with the the building and commissioner or the Board of Health, whichever entity has authority over that. The neighborhood character and social structures, it will remain a a single-family house in a neighborhood of single-family houses. Impacts on the natural environment, there would appear to be none. And potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment would not appear to present any additional demands on town services. The tax base would be increased, and there would be some temporary employment increase due to the construction. Brian and Stu, you comfortable with that sort of recitation that we would look forward to seeing in a hearing decision when Peter drafts it?
I'm good with that.
Anything else you want to add? Okay.
No, no.
Okay, Mr. Hemming, typically what we do at this point, we have not taken a formal vote to grant you the special permit, but we have discussed the issues. Clearly, all three of us are going to vote in favor of it. What we do is we ask Peter to draft a decision in accordance with our discussion this evening. And then, at our next meeting, we would close the hearing, take a formal vote, and approve the hearing. However, having in mind that Stu is not going to be able to be at our meeting on September twenty-eighth, but hopefully Nathan, our member who could not be here tonight, would be and could fill himself in by watching the brief video of this hearing. I would suggest we continue it to the twenty-eighth with the anticipation that Nathan will be able to step in and be a voting member on the decision. If he's unable to do that, then we probably will have to continue it to our first meeting in October. But let's shoot for September twenty-eighth in order to give you as much time as possible during the remaining construction, construction season. So if that's okay, I hear a motion to continue the hearing till our next meeting on Tuesday, September twenty-eighth at seven P M.
Make a motion that we continue the twenty-eight Roberts Road special permit hearing to September twenty-eighth at seven P M.
I second that motion.
I, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Segal, vote in favor.
Excellent. Very good. Peter, do you think we'll be able to get a draft decision by that date? I know, again, it's just one more thing to add to your double duty that you're performing there.
Nope, I think I'll be able to get this one tendered up.
Okay, very good. Mr. Hemming, the process will be, hopefully, we'll be back on the twenty-eighth to approve the decision. It then has to be signed, which will happen within probably three or four days typically. It is then filed with the town clerk, and there is a twenty-day waiting period for anybody to file an appeal. And after that twenty-day period expires, you can file the decision with the Registry of Deeds, and you are on your way with the building commissioner, et cetera. So hopefully, we will see you back on the twenty-eighth. Any questions?
No, just thank you for your time tonight, and I hope to see you in a couple of weeks.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
For our final item on the agenda is item number four, the Continued Public Hearing on Forty-three Cutler Drive, Their Special Permit Application. It was continued from our last meeting. The hearing was for Peter to draft a decision in accordance with the discussion that we had that evening. The hearing is still open. It has not been closed, and we have a we have a draft decision. Anybody have problems or any questions regarding the decision? Obviously, there are some things that will have to be changed. I made a couple of notes. I don't mind going going first. Obviously, on page two of the decision, under facts and evidence in the third paragraph, where it references that the following members were seated on the public hearing, Mr. Trefethan, Mr. Green, and Mr. Forrestall. We need to add a sentence that on September fourteenth, Mr. Segal became a sitting, was seated on the matter and and voted. Chuck's term as an associate member expired on August thirty-first, although he was able to sit on the first two dates. Obviously, he's not able to be here tonight and to vote on the decision. In the following paragraph, I thought a word "and" should be added between the two dates of August tenth and August twenty-fourth. Under findings by the board, a little further down on that page, and item number A, it talks about a dog grooming polar, and I think a typo, it should be parlor, P-A-R-L-O-R, as opposed to a polar bear. And there were a couple of minor typos. And then, again, obviously, on page three, when it comes to voting, Chuck Green's name would be changed to Stuart Segal as voting on the matter. Stu, I suppose we should back up and just double-check with you and make sure you do vote in favor of of this, as you weren't in a, I think we participated in the discussion at the last meeting, but I don't think you voted.
No, I didn't.
Or indicated what your vote was going to be, I should say, because none of us voted.
I I would be in favor of the.
Okay. Then perhaps someone would like to make a motion to close the public hearing and enter into deliberations.
I have a couple of questions on that.
Sorry, Brian.
On the conditions, item number one, it says one dog shall be groomed at a time. Should it say only one dog should be groomed at a time? And then the second.
I would, I would support that that addition.
And the second condition is there shall be no grooming on Saturdays or Sundays. And I know it's primarily grooming is what they want to do, but should we make it say something more all-encompassing? You know, what if somebody wants to stop in and just get their dog's nails trimmed or something? It seems like that's not actually grooming, but something that they do. And and so what we're trying to prevent is any business from happening on Saturday or Sunday, as I understand it.
I agree, and I think that's what the the applicant had indicated they were comfortable with was not was having a restriction so that they basically wouldn't be open on Saturdays or Sundays.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes, just jump in. Yeah, I know, that's what the, I took those two, I I took those first three conditions right from the applicant, you know, from the applicant's conversation there with the board, but also that those are all things that they identified within the memo to the board. So in any way to change those, it's just, it would just be to reflect what they, what was submitted to the committee within the applicant, within their 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 true test application. But you are correct, Brian. It was, there we shall be no business on Saturdays and Sundays.
Yeah, and, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do, too, is to keep the carload down on the street, so, you know, one dog at a time is is says that, but there shouldn't be, you know, three cars in the queue on the street. So I think if we add the word only one dog, so that, you know, if they have three people in cars sitting in the driveway and one in the street, it gives the neighbors the opportunity to say, hey, look, they said, you know, they're only going to do one dog at a time, and there's only one dog in the house, but there's three dogs on the property, or, you know, I just want to have, I just want the neighbors to have the kind of the mechanism or the trigger mechanism to go back to the enforcement agent, say, look, and and if the owner can't say, well, we only had one dog, you know what I mean? I'm just trying to be fair to everyone.
But a customer could come in with two dogs to be groomed in their appointment.
Good point.
So, you know, I don't mean to be, you know, a lawyer here, but if you say that a a customer can only bring one dog, we we don't really mean that, do we?
No, you're right, because I always drop my dogs off as a pair, so I would be shooting myself in the foot in this case.
I want one.
Customer. Customer?
Yeah.
Solves the problem or the concern that you have and.
Yeah, one customer. Yeah, one customer shall be serviced at a time.
Correct. The the concern is more for the traffic and the cars piling up in a driveway and not that there's two dogs in a basement, one being groomed and the other waiting to be groomed by all the same owner.
Yes, exactly. Yep. Good points, Stu. How did I get that? Geez. And then every five to six weeks, I'm at the groomers with my dog and I forget I take both of them, but.
Just going to say that you're going to pay a price with the dogs for that. Okay, any, I had nothing else, any anything else?
I I'm all set with the the rest.
Decision, okay. Peter, are you all set with the with the suggested changes?
Yeah, so just the last one, there should I will be, there shall only be one customer at a time conducting business. Was that correct?
Yes.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, I don't drive two cars to bring my two dogs there, but that's what I'm trying to get at, to keep the the intent was to keep the traffic and the, you know, the neighborhood minimized by this business. So that's what I'm trying to give the neighbors, you know, the mechanism to enforce that.
Okay, no, I got that.
Okay. Very good. If there's no now we've already.
Make a motion, yeah.
Motion to approve the the decision as amended, I guess, would probably be.
Yes, I agree. Yeah, I make a motion that we accept the special permit as amended.
I second that motion.
I John Trefeatheran vote in favor of granting the special permit and signing the decision as amended.
I Brian Forrestall, the same as John.
I Stuart Segal vote in favor also.
Very good. Peter, when when would the decision be available for us to come down and sign at some point?
Let's say anytime, I'll say Thursday. Give me if you if the board give me tomorrow just to make those minutes. At least tomorrow morning, it could be, it could be ready.
I mean, what take what what time you need, that's all.
Yeah, I would say noon time.
Okay.
If everybody isn't tired, if someone wants to stop by and I'll put the decision on the top counter and leave the Rosalie order. And so if anybody wants this whenever, so everyone can swing by, please do.
So you send us an email when it's absolutely ready to be signed?
Yes, I can do that.
I think that would be better.
Okay.
Excellent. Hey. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is meeting minutes. And we don't have any minutes. And I understand the the difficulty in getting minutes provided, but I'm getting a little concerned because we've gone back now three or four meetings without minutes. And I know we like to keep as current as possible when I, you can you give us an update, Peter, as to what?
Yeah, so before Emma went out, well, after Emma went out, she has updated, she's updated the meetings. I just have to take, it's just going to take me an hour or two to see where we are. I think she was able to draft one or two meetings and then I can obviously pick up the rest from there, but by the next meeting, I should be able to have the meeting minutes reorganized and up to date for the board to.
Okay. Very good. Staff updates and administrative matters.
I do not have much, however, I will tell the board. And I believe I sent it out into an email, but the U G C project was appealed by the property owner, Mr. Gainer. And I believe I sent, and I have that documentation in the office. And so that appeal is going to take its, you know, path through the courts. The town was, obviously, we were served and each board member was served, that was. That was the proper procedure, which had to be done by the by the by Mr. Gainer and as as his party was or his attorney had to serve the court members. But really, nothing has come of that from this point. And in my eyes, Attorney Mead has has been briefed and she is as town council acting acting in a way that will serve both the select board and the Z B A moving forward.
And there's nothing that we need to do, so that's fine.
Correct, it's outside of ours hands, I would say.
Excellent. The only thing I have is that as of September first, we are into a new year as far as terms are are concerned and we need to select officers for the coming year. I think we need to do that when Nathan is here, as he is the third full member. And perhaps we can put that on the on the agenda as an administrative matter for the next next meeting.
I will make note of that right now.
With nothing else to to do, no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
I John Trefeatheran vote in favor.
I Brian Forrestal vote in favor.
I Stuart Segal vote in favor.
Excellent, thank you very much, gentlemen, and thank you, whacka. Good evening.
Good evening.
All next time, gentlemen. Bye bye.